All right, thank you for coming. I will call this meeting to order. Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Angel.
Here.
Cindy Whiteing.
Here.
Mary Beth Shaw. James Cartman. Barb Stotts.
Here.
Matt Crowe.
Great. I approve most of the motions for the political allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you. Any questions? Karen Ann, Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of February 27, 2023?
Second. I tried to get in there before you did.
Any questions? Karen Ann, Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb? Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll approvals and disbursements as they're presented?
Oh, my.
Thank you. Nobody wanted to do that, all right. Any questions? No questions? All right. Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb? Yes.
Matt? We do have public input today. Megan is here, and I know that you have support from several people. I will just give you a two-minute warning, but go ahead and end the show.
I brought my deck. Can I have his two minutes as well? I mean, he could come up with my lover, but it's probably a little awkward.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right. So my name's Megan Huffden, and I'm here just thinking on behalf of my thoughts and feelings on the Special Education Department. I did pass out my letter just because there were about five other parents who... I wrote it, but they shared my sentiment. And then one other mom who couldn't be here tonight, I passed the letter as well. So for those who don't know, my boys are each a voice here in the school, and they have severe autism and are both non-speaking. So they require constant support and accommodation in every aspect of their schooling. But they are also thriving because of Wisconsin Heights. Given the fact that we're in a small community and I've chosen to share my boys' journey pretty publicly, I'm also in a unique position. Many parents whose children are starting the IEP process here at Heights will reach out to me for support. And I hear time and time again from those parents how grateful they are to be here at Wisconsin Heights. I also have the experience of working with different autism organizations across our state. And in these positions, I have met parents all over the state, and I hear the struggles they're constantly having. They're constantly asking me how I do it, how I manage to have two children so severely impacted by their disabilities in a small public school, but still receiving so many amazing services. And the truth is, I always feel really guilty when this happens because I don't have an answer for that. I didn't have to fight for it. It was always just the standard protocol here at Heights. As a special needs parent who tries to always look at the big picture in our school as a whole, I know that caseloads like my boys put a huge strain on our school system. I know it's challenging when my boys require more resources and support on any given day. When my older son was learning to walk and go up and down the stairs at Mezzo, he needed two staff members with him at all times, one holding his hand and the other tapping his foot and offering encouragement. When my younger son was struggling with post-COVID PTSD, there were times he needed two staff members with him at all times in the hallway as he constantly was checking to make sure teachers didn't disappear from his world again. I know that these situations are hard on our school. However, my boys didn't choose to have these struggles. We did, however, choose to be here at Wisconsin Heights. And that choice put my older son in a position where an entire school system taught him how to walk. And my younger son was surrounded by an entire school staff that helped pull him out of his PTSD by offering him understanding and compassion. At the end of the day, there's no other district I want my children in, and many of the other parents feel the same way. I also know that this population is growing at a rapid rate. Currently, autism affects one in 44 children. That has tripled in less than two decades. In 2021 in Wisconsin, one in 53 eight-year-olds had autism. And I can pretty much guarantee you that number has gone up even more recently. And that's just for autism. Never mind all the other disorders and diagnoses we see. I can only imagine the overwhelm that the district is feeling with the increased number of IEPs coming through every year just based on the reports I hear from fellow parents. And I know there are parents I have yet to meet here. I can also imagine this summer is going to bring big changes and transitions with you leaving us. Dr. Green has gone above and beyond for our family, and he has gone out of his way to make sure my two boys have their needs met. You've been such an advocate, and we are so lucky to have had you at your school and then very sad you're leaving, but congratulations. I'm also very hopeful, though, for how our district can work together to support our program moving forward. I hope that as we move forward and adjust to the new changes, we can work together and support our special education staff. As a spec ed parent, there is nothing more I want than to work with the school to help create a smooth program where everyone benefits, a program that doesn't put a strain on our district, but instead adds to the value of it. Because that is how we, as parents, view the special education staff here in our district. They are beyond valuable. We truly have the most incredible staff, and the last thing that we want to see is them going through burnout due to the demands of the job. I would love to see our special education teachers getting more help and more support, but I also know that a more hands-on, death approach isn't a simple solution. These hands won't be helping the situation without proper training, which takes time and resources. However, I truly feel like it's a worthy investment, given that the numbers of spec ed students are only going to go up. I also know funding is always an issue for public schools. So many of the resources and adaptive materials that our kids need cost money, and that drains funds quickly. Families like mine want to be part of the solution, whether it's fundraising or making donations to the special education program. This is an investment not only in our school, but in our children. At the end of the day, we know our children's needs can be very demanding. We live it every day. But we also know that our children didn't ask for these struggles, and despite all of the obstacles in their way, they want to learn and be a part of the school community. It's their right, their right to an education and to a community of acceptance. We, as parents, want nothing more than to see the special education staff gain the support they need to carry out their job responsibilities without fear of burning out. Our children need them, we, as parents, need them, and our school needs them.
Thanks, Megan. All right.
Can I just respond and say Megan is like the most positive supportive advocate? I've been in this business thirty-one years, and she is just top of the list as far as parents, so.
My kids have a lot of needs, and you know, that's okay. But I think the gist of why I wanted to talk is I see that even though when our staff are being burnt out, they don't stop for our kids. I'll get emails at nine o'clock at night, you know, things like that. So the burnout is not going to stop them from helping our kids, but I am scared of what it's doing to them. And I just want to help because I see what they do for my kids and any way we can give back. And they're just amazing people, so, as are you, but truly. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to reports. I do not have anything at this time. I know we have some other reports to talk about later, so Jordan?
Yeah. Sounds good. I'll just jump in real quick. Two things I wanted to share that I think are pretty cool. Recently was interviewed by Professor Jessica Brogley from UW-Platville regarding our Grow grant and Grow Your Own Teacher Program. So she caught wind of it because one of the students actually is attending Platville. That was one of the first scholarship recipients. And Jessica heard about it, thought it was a cool program, and wanted to conduct a few interviews for a podcast that she's going to put out. So she interviewed myself, Liz, and then the student as well. And I can just tell you from the twenty-five to thirty-minute conversation that I had with her, we talked about this before, but the word's out. And like the view on this from people even at the university level at a place, you know, college, state university, is that this program has the potential to be a model that's replicated throughout the state. And that people are paying attention and viewing this like very closely. So I just wanted to share that for the district that as you think about future decisions and you know, you look to allocate your resources, we understand this was an investment. But as we said from the beginning and as the research showed, field of education really has not invested in talent ever. They've just had a captive audience of people that applied for jobs, and they were desperate for jobs, so they had to pay it. And now that the pool's a little more shallow and it's more competitive for teachers, I think the sea of change is coming. And for the district to be at the forefront of that and to be a part of a program that universities are looking at and are analyzing and looking to maybe try to replicate throughout the state. I'm just advocating as this continues to go on and you experience success, the consortium experience success, don't just back away because you ask yourselves like, well, it's going to cost us $20,000. $20,000 gets us a great teacher that sticks around for a while. It'll be the best $20,000 you spend. But it's really encouraging to hear what I'm hearing about that program. And then the other thing I know everyone's wondering, because I've been wondering myself, solar is still happening. I talked to Burke on Friday. He's working through permits. He's getting things ordered. He's waiting on ordering some things. We're supposed to find out, it's set in three-ish weeks. Burke's like telling a month about the public service grant. So let's say mid-April we'll move out the public service grant. He's still planning on a July install. The one thing that could start before then is maybe some of the, like the period basically that they would mount. Or if it's on and mount the panels on, but the brunt of that work is still looking like a July start. Spoke to Bill Sullivan about this morning, obviously with my transition this summer. Bill's well versed in this. He knows our grounds. He knows our electrical system. I think in the meantime, July, August, September, while this is being finished, Bill will just integrate into that kind of legal and solar project, and he understands what's going on.
Good.
So just wanted to share those two updates.
Are you done?
Whoever wants to dive in next, go ahead.
We had Kim Houser take two teams. I remember now. Veterinary science.
Oh, gosh. I just spaced the other one.
Anyways, two A-teams to Platville to compete last week. They both placed first, wildlife.
Wow.
Wildlife and small animal.
Cam, Cam.
Cam. They both placed first. They are competing again this week. She's also taking a frontline team. And hopefully they win again this week because then they would be going on to state to compete. We had a play that, or musical this past weekend. It was highly successful and well received, I think. Had many comments from people who are excited to see a more modern musical than Mary Hough. So they did a great job. She was a large group, thirty-five students involved, and they did well. They sold out in Friday night, so it was a great weekend.
He doubled the musical from last year. Yes, amazing. And he said he had seventeen last year, so.
That's good.
Excellent. Yeah, yeah, that's cool.
My word for it, I just mentioned the academic career planning meeting we met in February. Just kind of a follow-up to that. Liz and I have a meeting scheduled with Madison College that are coming to Wisconsin Heights to really sit down with us, go through our course handbook, and just see if there's any natural connections with some of our current classes to increase our code credit opportunities for our kids. So excited about that meeting, just where that may lead us down the road. But I see that it'll be work in progress over the course of the next couple of years. So I'm excited to put a boost in that area.
Can I ask you a question? Can you talk a little bit about those digital subscriptions? I see there's like a quantity of twenty-five, so it's not a hardcover book. It's online, right?
Yep.
So can the kids access it at home, or is this something they can only do at school?
They will be able to if you're talking about the science book. Yeah. And there's additional, lower on the quote, there's an additional hundred digital subscriptions.
Yes, I'll add.
So all the middle school kids will have access, actually to all three courses. And when they log into, like, yes, that's what that is. And so it's kind of a combination of a classroom set of textbooks as well as digital access.
And what were the ones?
Well, just the classroom set.
Wow. It's going that way.
For all those snow days next year, a little.
Let's hope. I don't want that for you.
And all digital programs are not created equal. I just wanted to ask if we went through, and I'll talk more about that curriculum.
I should have waited.
So. I'll stop talking.
Kendra?
Sure. I just want to publicly say thanks to SAW for helping us create opportunities with kids. Our co-op's are thriving. Hacky was a regional champion, boy swimming, went to state earning six places overall. And we had someone around the high school podium, which was really awesome to see. So, and should it be approved, right? Hacky is also another opportunity that.
Wrestling.
Wrestling, we have Hacky, wrestling. We've cooperated on so many things. So that's really awesome to have them in our court and help us partner with them. In terms of something that I talked about last time was myself and a hundred and forty other Wisconsin athletic directors are working together on the Inside Out Coaching Initiative, which was just put on by NFL and the Packers. And one of the things that we're working on at the moment is our elevator speeches for, you know, that little tagline that we want to be able to have anybody say like, oh, you're a part of Vanguard Athletics. What does that look like? And so talking about what is purpose-based sports? How is success defined at the high school level? And how that's very different than the collegiate level or the youth sports level? And so kind of hammering out what is our mission as high school athletics across the state? So it's been a really great opportunity to collaborate with other athletic directors. We get put in in the breakout spaces. I think I met with ten other different ones last week when I had my training. And we've got two more yet this year, and then that opens up a coaches portal for me to train coaches then next year. So it's a really great opportunity to have cohesiveness throughout the state for our athletics, so.
Thanks, Kendra.
All right. So I highlighted some of the work that the transition team has been doing. We've been meeting once a month throughout the year. So Chris Paul, Tracy Paul, Heather Schamber, Julie Horner, Abby Cabrera, and Vanessa Severt. So most recently had a field trip to ETC. Dale helped chaperone. So I have a picture in there. Not everybody's doing the picture, had an IEP, but we had three kids with IEPs, and then that seemed a little small. So this helped Kurt Wong. And so the other kids are what I call friends in groupies of Kurt Wong. And look specifically at, you know, ETC entry-level employment along with summer employment. They started employing kids at sixteen. And they, I haven't heard a bad thing from kids who work there or parents of kids who work there. So it was a great trip. Lisa Weaver, who worked here at Heights and has lots of resume in the Heights community. She led the tour along with another ETC employee. So, you know, our transition team just looking at resources for kids with disabilities as they transition in the community. I listened to some of those in the board report. And then I also wanted to highlight some of the things that Tracy Paul has done in her program. She's had volunteers at Saw Hospital, Beast Style, State Bank Cross Queens, Black River Children's Museum, Parkinson Bourbon Shoe Box Shack, rookies, paid opportunities at a lot of those places. And then in addition, Maisel Hardware, McFarland's, American Family Premier. And, you know, along with Kitchen here. One of the things I like about having us combined is that we could have us, assuming special needs, work in the elementary kitchen. And it's not as stigmatizing as someone who's assuming the disability working in the high school cafeteria from my perspective. But yeah, I listed some of the other things. Tracy has kids doing stuff around at the school, you know, including mail delivery, things like that. And one of the things that happened when I started here was the flood. So that put a damper on things for some of Tracy's community programs. And then, you know, just started to have some resurgence, and then the pandemic hit. So that, you know, really has been difficult to gain some momentum. So it's nice to see things moving in that direction again. And then you may remember from previous reports, so we follow up with kids a year after they graduate. So students with disabilities are a year after they exit our program. And if they are, as I determined, they are doing something productive, we get $1,000 from the Transition Improvement Grant. So they either have to be employed and working more than twenty hours a week, making more than minimum wage, or going to school either full or part-time or a combination of those things. If their answer to the survey is they're just sitting home playing video games or they don't answer the survey at all, then we don't get any money. And we routinely get either every single graduate that we get money for, or we just miss one.
That's great. Awesome.
Thanks, Matt. Scott's multitasking behind us.
Yes.
It's true.
So in addition to the items in my work report, I just added a couple of things for myself at the bottom. This week, jump rope for heart began. I don't know if you all remember doing that when you were younger, but it's back. And that will be all of this week for every grade during peak, you know, do a lot of jump roping, which is fun.
Are you going to join them?
What's that?
Are you going to join them?
Maybe.
Good. Good for you.
I didn't know we were skating, so perhaps I need to jump.
There you go.
That's a good idea, yeah. And then last week, or a couple of weeks ago now, fifth grade band joined with the middle school and high school band. They came over to do a little music assembly. Typically, they like to do it in December, if memory serves, but it didn't happen this year, so they moved it to March. It was a lot of fun. We learned we could fit everyone in the gym, not both gyms. It's great. The band gun only scared a few kids. So that's okay. Now we don't. The band guard's coming. We ask certain kids not to come in. But I know it was a lot of fun, and I know the fifth graders were very nervous to play with them. But had a good time after it was all said and done, so.
That's a very great experience.
Yeah.
I heard it was a good performance. Courtney thought it was excellent.
High praise indeed there.
Yes. Very good.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Cheryl joined us online.
She did, yes.
Cheryl, if you can hear me, if you want to share out?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Hey, good evening. I'm at a leadership academy today, so just traveling from that. But in addition to all of my normal stuff that you can see on my report, I have basically been working hand-in-hand with the food service department in doing all the day-to-day duties that we divvied up between people in Rebecca's absence. So it's been a long two weeks, but you'll see further down in the agenda that we're recommending a hire for that position tonight.
Good news indeed. Thanks, Cheryl. Any other follow-up for Cheryl or the admin? No, just thanks for the extra work, Cheryl.
Yeah, thank you. Great. All right, well, we will then move on. Let's see. Looks like Dale is up, as we just talked about a few minutes ago. Do you have a presentation or?
I'll just, you know, I tried to outline on the report, just pretty straightforward of what we want to do. Science, any donations, K-12. We look across grade levels, sort of elementary level, really no changes there. Back in 2015, 16, we worked with Group Auto Richardson Science, some retired teachers, put together the science kits and the units that we would teach throughout the school year. They're still good. They're still permanent, following the NGS standards. So we're all set there. We don't need to make any changes there. Recent big change in our recommendation, and I'll skip down to the recommendation 912. We're going to continue with our current resources and current course offerings here. As you know, at the high school level, we have two veteran science teachers there. Dan Jergen's not here this year, so expecting him to be back next year. Dan and Joe, we decided just to wait, you know, no major needs at the high school level as it sits right now. We may want to tweak some things next year or the year after. We just thought it was best to wait and get back, so let's work together on that. So we just put a pause on the 912. At the six-eight, though, and Scott, if you want to scroll down a little bit, you can just kind of walk through. We looked, started back in October. Knew we needed to update some resources at the middle school level. Our current core resources, I think, at a date of like 2008, we hadn't, we'd not, we knew it the last cycle that went around. We kept it the same. So we started, just I went out, looked at all the different programs, talked to some other directors, talked to some colleagues across the state. And really, at the middle school level, it's all over the board. There's, everybody's kind of using different things, different programs, teacher-created, combination of things. So we kind of narrowed it down to eight programs. Then we narrowed it down to four programs. Had four reps come in, present to our two teachers, Kendra and I, and narrowed it down to Inspire Science as our recommendation. One of the things that we will need to do with Inspire Science is phase in a new school in sequence for their middle school science courses. And you can see, kind of laid it out there pretty simple. You know, currently, we teach life science in sixth grade, earth science in seventh grade, and the physical science. So next year, we'll have earth science at sixth and seventh grade. And then physical science in eighth grade. And then 2024, 25, we'll go back to earth science in sixth grade, life science, and the physical science. Part of the reason it was interesting, you know, as we made our decision, one of the reasons for switching that around on the science side, earth before life, you know, the water cycle and different things, you know, sets a better foundation leading to life science, but also math. The math that's required in science actually lines up better with our math curriculum if we flip-flop the two. So it really is, it's a better match, though. That was part of the recommendation there. So just wanted to talk a little bit about that. And then moving down, you can see I listed our educational standards for science. So we do use the next generation science standards as our standards for science. Particularly at the six-twelve level, those teachers do cross-reference the ACP college and career readiness standards. And that helps determine our essential standards or what's most important at each grade level. So part of that is Liz's influence, and across the board, we did a better job of that, incorporating those ACP standards within there. So I thought that was important as well. Any questions about science? Mary Beth, did I answer your question about the digital?
Yeah. I just. Such a huge change, you know, to think about everything, most everything going digital. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody would have access to this stuff. And when you talk about ordering only twenty-five, so I go, well, there's fifty kids in the class, so how does that work?
It's a classroom set, and usually, you know, twenty-five would be a large one class. So there's typically enough, if we need to send a textbook home, we can do that.
So those are the actual textbooks?
Yeah, those will stay in the classroom.
There's a classroom set of the textbooks. It's just not a book for every child person at all times in their backpack. It's a classroom set.
And across the district, we have a number of different courses that we just have a classroom set. Teachers have it on the shelf, and they'll have the kids go over, grab a book, they'll reference something, use it. Put the book back at the end of the hour, next semester comes in, we do the same thing. So we do that for a number of different sorts of grades.
So what do you hear from kids as far as, you know, preferences about books or digital or?
It's mixed. They don't want the digital. That was one of the things with Bra Hill. It lines up better with our social studies digital platform. And so it's very similar. Our kids are familiar with that. We do use that on the social studies side, so it pairs up nicely with that. And so that was also part of our decision. If we went on a different program, the digital side of that is completely different. Kids would have to learn a different setup, different program. So it does line up with some of the other programs that we currently are using. They're, just not a big deal for them to use digital. And they can access things, you know, wherever they happen to be, so.
Faster than us nowadays.
I just want to say that I am so grateful for what all of you have done. I mean, obviously, I have a child who's a science and math kid. And I was just telling Cindy that he picked up a second minor. And so, you know, he thrived with the. And so, you know, he thrived with the science and the math programs that we have. And it just, you know, it really took him to the next level once he got out of school. And the fact that he's going to an aeronautical school, which is a private school in Arizona, you know, and already collaborating with NASA, it's, it's a pretty big deal. So I, I commend all of you for all the work and the research and, and you know, what you guys do for our kids in their curriculum. It's great.
Airiculture, worked with Kim. You know, really started in September. We had some informal conversations. We had a couple of official meetings, which the two of us went through the courses, did find some resources that she needed to update, and so went ahead with those. The veterinary book is a new book. We hadn't seen that before, but she'd used that in all her large and small animal care classes. So she first came, actually, Kim found that resource at one of her FFA conventions that she went to. It was recommended to her by someone else, and so we got our hands on it, took a look at it, and it's like, yeah, that's, that's what she was looking for. And then updating her aorticulture book. I think the old book was the second edition. It's related just to the date, yes.
Of how many?
Second to ninth now.
So, yeah, it was hard. And she's like, well, I, you know, the chapters are very similar. I took the two resources. This one is updated and it's better. But I, I just said, okay, we're not, we can't use that anymore. It was hard. You can see the standings there for A as well. And then our next steps, curriculum week, you know, a little bit different. You know, we have two middle school teachers. Not a lot of work for our elementary teachers for the science during curriculum week. You know, but we do have some follow-up that we can do with math and the Bridges program, because we did that enablement that this year, and that's a good adjustment for the teachers. So we are gonna set aside some time to do some follow-up with our Bridges math program. Now that we taught it for a year, we can use that time to get set and maybe come out this year or something. And then you can see our curriculum rotation, what's up next for next year. And to have a pause here in '24, '25, maybe the time where we set, see the roadmap of things. But then it's back to, you know, the start, back to meeting again in '25, '26. So really part of the district, we stay really consistent with our rotation and thank the board for giving those resources for us, because it's made a world of difference for our consistency across the board. So appreciate that. Any questions, Cheryl?
Have you gotten any feedback or was maybe about not having a physical presence as far as the business ed side of things? If you think not having?
No, I haven't. I, we have been using both Madison College and Wisconsin Virtual School for online business courses.
Yeah. You don't think it's deterring kids from being hurt or?
I'm not sure if it's deterring. Our numbers weren't strong when we had, but as a teacher, so I'm not, like, trying to tell. It's hard to tell if it's really deterring kids from taking it or not.
I just know it was such a big part of our experience.
Right.
Maybe to an extent if kids don't know what they're missing out on. You know, but. Thanks.
Thanks, Dale. Any other questions for Dale or just critically related? Appreciate the organization, Dale, and focus.
Yes, very much so. All right, let's start here. Moving on then, we will talk kind of as a board here. If you haven't heard or you haven't read the, the agenda that Jordan is leaving us at the end of the school year. We're very sad and appreciate everything you've done, but it does give us an opportunity to start the search again. So I reached out to WASP, and they were the ones that did our search the last time where we found Jordan. We got a proposal and wanted to bring it to all of you, really to just kinda talk if there's questions, if there's any concerns and anything like that on this, or if we're ready to go or we wanna look at something else. So anyone have questions, I guess, first?
So I, let me flip a page, this is the natural page I'm on. Eighteen, page eighteen. So it talks about optional add-ons, like you can have the Association of Latino Administrators, and then you can have the National Alliance of Black School Educators. Do we assume, I would assume they're part of the?
Well, they are. They can certainly get the rest of it where we, nor where we have, where the mass production is. This would just be going to those groups. So it's just an additional area to target. We did not last time, and I think we had a pretty good range of people, obviously with paper, but I mean, I think we had women and men, so that we can look at. So it was a pretty good mix. But I mean, that's an additional money, so we have to look at how valuable that is.
So we expected they're part of the major group too.
Absolutely. They can go in week, is it still weekend or not?
Weekend's the primary year posting. So what WASP will do is they'll put it out on weekend. And then they'll also do, there's a job center that they have that WASD has. And then they also do like email pushes, so people that have either included interest in applying for superintendent jobs or practicing superintendents, I still get them all the time for other schools through WASP, like notice there's a job posted in X, Y, or Z. So that's a part of the service with WASP, because I see them all the time from other places where they're helping with the search.
And I know I've seen it, like, when we get WASP emails from them announcing like upcoming meetings. I don't know if that's, I guess I didn't look at that, if that was part of, or if they just add them all, whoever they're working with. They didn't just add them all as part of that, which I think is another way to get people to look at that.
So I brought my binder. What we did last night?
You're funny, I do not. That's good for you.
Complete with notes of what we were doing.
Yeah.
Anybody wants to look at this?
It is very thorough. I really, I, I will say, I really liked that they were very thorough. They gave you, you know, paper versus electronic. You know, they're, and it is nice. So last year, we did not spend what the max they're saying is. And this time, we have a person who's on the website max. So even less travel time that we have to pay for, so.
But that's kinda how they organized the information in there. So just so you get an idea of how they present the information to you and I guess kinda what, how they go about the process.
My only comment was, I mean, back then, we really weren't going in blind. Nobody on the board had, you know, ever gone to something like this. So I think this time around, we can be a little bit more intentional about the needs from WASP and what exactly we'd like them to help facilitate with. Where I think a lot of the introductory kinda stuff, some of us, and obviously the binders themselves provide a lot of information to get started and have those conversations by ourselves. So I think we just have to be kinda direct and upfront as far as what we're looking for. And the not to exceed amount, I think, is definitely a ceiling. So I think we spent a lot of time just listening about the world we're about to enter. Where I think this time around, we can just kinda get to work and so.
And with that, I don't know if we need the public listening sessions and questioning.
Did you have a listen?
We did. Because none of us knew what we had done before, and it was very helpful to gather information. We were also in a very, very different situation as a school district. And I think that, you know, we've also got the future search meeting again in April. So we are communicating with the public a lot more than we have. And so that's something that we can look at eliminating as well. So I think there's little things in there that we can cut out, but still get a really good result.
A little detail.
It was, yeah. They want your, they want your business.
Is Rachel still there, Rachel?
I've seen her at the WASP convention.
She was really good.
Yeah, this one, it's Dan, and I don't remember his name.
Yeah, you're in.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
He's a, he's a girl of workshops and being.
So does anybody have any concern of going with them? Or are you guys status quo?
We're gonna be the alternative.
Doing it on our own?
No, I like.
No, thank you.
Close quarter, there's a lot of other services. I mean, if you didn't think that WASP was what you wanted to go with, I mean, there's other private agencies that do this. This is like a favorite retirement job for superintendents. So I mean, there's other groups that you could go with if you wanted to. I mean, I, like I said, I see the jobs posted all the time. I would say WASP probably posts, I don't know, a quarter of the jobs in the state of Wisconsin for superintendents, in particularly smaller districts. You tend to get larger districts that wanna spend more money and wanna have a lot more involved process. And they'll hire a private firm. I mean, it'll cost them seventy-five thousand dollars. So I think WASP is very typically used for, I would say, districts fifteen hundred or less. They're kind of the go-to, unless, yes, you're gonna try to do it yourself, which I would not advise that.
Isn't that a lot of work? It is, yeah, absolutely. All right, well, great, I will contact them, we'll see what we have to do. I'm gonna move on from there. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the board, board policy updates that we reviewed last time?
Some motion. You're going Angie?
Angie, Matt.
All right, were there any questions or last-minute changes you didn't speak up for? All right, Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Bar?
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well.
I'll follow with Neola tomorrow, and it usually takes a day or two, and it'll be updated online.
Great, all right. Do I have a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of a Nescro account with respect to and the defeasance of certain, of certain of the general obligation refunding funds? Series 2021A dated March 10, 2021.
And there is a transfer of funds?
Great, that's good. I'll second. Thank you. Any questions?
Just wanna say real quick, I mean, the notion of utilizing about six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, paying off six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars with the debt early, and saving the district one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars in the process. I did the quick math, it's about twenty-five percent. And how many other investments we could make that would have an immediate return of twenty-five percent? It's a good investment.
Unless it's something that we review at this time of the year. I thought that was, I didn't say that. All right. Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Curriculum. Do I have a motion to approve science curriculum purchase for grades six through eight in the amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-two cents?
Oh, my goodness.
Second.
Thank you. And thanks again for everyone's input and all of your work, Dale. Thank you. Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve an adjusted bid for roofing work on the self-gym with FJA Christensen Roofing Company Inc. for three hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Coming up quite a bit.
Not surprising. We do have first, do I have a second?
Is it very good?
Yeah. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
So let me, uh.
Yep, I was gonna say you wanted to chat.
Yep, you're right, Angie.
So when they, when they initially bid, they had no knowledge that there was a second roof layer that was actually already on top of the previous. So when they came out and did the roofing cores before they put the project out, two competitive bids, they obviously took the corner and figured out that there was two full roofs that are beyond the deck.
Oh, my goodness.
So when the bids went out, that drastically changed the initial estimates. And for context, first round of bids actually went out and came back in the three hundred and seventy-five to three hundred and eighty-thousand-dollar range. At that time, Bill and I met with our roofing consultant and talked about anything we could possibly do without risking the integrity of the roof or the project to lower the dollar more. So these are actually resubmitted bids that were lower than the initial bids. It was just a couple of minor things where it doesn't do anything for warranty, just eliminated some of the labor and some of the things that they would do during the construction process to lower the price. I don't like the number either. The only thing I'll say to that is, whether we do it now or next year, it'll just be five percent more expensive next year. As we talked about with the whole roofing thing, we're protecting the assets below the roofs. And this is the one section we wanna get done, stay on top of. So unfortunate, but no one could have predicted that there was two roofs there and labor went out significantly when they realized they had to tear off two roofs.
I was just gonna ask you that question, if they were gonna tear them both off and put a new one down, because I was like, okay, if they just like go and put another one on it?
That would be a little kinda sketchy.
So I was hoping they were gonna pull off the, both of them and redo it that way. I mean, that makes a lot more sense. I mean, the labor makes a whole lot of sense, so. The numbers definitely jive in that regard, so.
So projects starting this summer, and I mean, depending how much time it takes with weather delays or other things, and done before school starts.
Have you heard that before?
I think done before school starts relatively comfortably if the weather's normal.
Who knows? All right, Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. All right, do I have a motion to approve 10-1 through 10-10, omitting 10.8?
I'll move through those.
I'll second.
Thank you, and again, thank you to Jordan. We're, it'll be a lot of work for the next couple of months, but we'll get through it. And thank you to the other retirements, and we've got a couple of hires, so it's lots going on right now. All right, Mary Beth, or?
Yes, yeah.
Mike?
Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well, thank you, guys. All right, do I have a motion to approve boys wrestling co-op with Sock, Sockbury?
Oh.
I'll second.
An exciting one, thank you again.
It's crazy to have wrestling.
I know, it's very cool, so.
Kendra, I just wanna say thank you for your work on this between student survey and then, probably was helpful for us that you're a former Sock employee. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Slide that right in. All right, Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Twelve point one, future meeting dates are listed. Is there, we'd likely will have to do some kind of a meeting, hopefully just after one of our next meetings with WASP, so we'll plan that out and see what we've got, but we're mad.
The other thing I just wanna throw in, there's a note under future meeting dates regarding meet and confer on April 10. So in the past, we had done like a separate meeting for that, hoping to piggyback the same night. Then with piggybacking the same night, flowed the possibility